Okay, we're ready to resume. We were in closed session talking about potential bid on the Washington McLaughlin School property, and we will continue that conversation after the meeting before our next closed session after the meeting. So what we have up now is a presentation and public hearing on the relocation of Washington Adventist Hospital, and the first thing we're going to do is we've been joined by Eric Wang as President of the Hospital, who's going to give us a short presentation, and then after that we'll have comments at the public hearing. Welcome.
Define "short" for me, will you Mayor? That's my attempt at humor. Thank you very much.
The late the time that this C O N has been going on. That's my attempt at humor.
Okay. That isn't going to happen. Well, thank you. Thank you for the time tonight. I appreciate the opportunity, Mr. Mayor, the City Council, and people of Tacoma Park, to invite us in for this presentation. I would like to -- do I control this here from the PowerPoint?
Yes.
Okay.
It's on the tray coming underneath you.
Oh, okay. There we go. Thank you. I want to start with a thank you. As you all know, I've been here a short amount of time in my position, about four months now as President of Washington Adventist Hospital, and I wanted to start with a thank you because I appreciate the constructive relationship that my predecessor, I think, constructed with the city, and I think that is very beneficial, and I certainly hope that that continues into the future. In my presentation tonight, I want to touch on some of the issues that we have been talking about. A lot of this is plowed ground in that you're familiar with it. There might be a couple new nuances, if you will, but much of it will be review. But I want to hit the highlights of the issues right now as we see it, as well as the timeline with the new certificate of need process for the new acute care campus in White Oak, as well as what does that mean for repurposing the Tacoma Park campus. A little bit about the hospital. We've been here for a long time. This facility started on our campus in 1907 as Washington Adventist Sanitarium, so we have a rich legacy, a rich heritage of service to Tacoma Park, and we are certainly proud of that, and we expect that to continue. We employ, it says approximately 1,350 today, it's 1,353, people who call that campus a home. They call it their employer. We think that is a vital relationship. We are proud of our quality of care. We, in 2013 and 14, we've been named a Joint Commission Top Performer on key quality measures. And we also are proud of our ability to lead in providing care to the underserved. And you can see state fiscal year 2014, we have contributed over $38 million in community benefit to the people of Tacoma Park and surrounding communities, largely in mission-based, mission-driven healthcare services and charity care. So we're proud of our history here in Tacoma Park. This is a long 10-plus-year conversation that many of you have been involved in, but why develop a new hospital campus? And I want to be specific about this, a new acute care hospital campus. Several reasons. Access is one. You know where it's located. Where in 1907 it probably was much different as far as the need to access folks and the people who came to the hospital for services, but it's not ideal. I'll just say parking, and any of you who have been there to visit folks, come for services, see a physician, know that parking is a significant challenge on our campus. We have limited public transportation, so folks who need to use public transportation to access services at the hospital, visit people at the hospital, come to work, are really hindered by the lack of services there. The facility, actually it's facilities, we've got a 1950s building, a 70s building, 80s building, 90s building, and they're in different states of kind of acceptability for current day acute care services. In particular, the 50s building, where about a third of our inpatient beds are housed, some have challenges because of the door with getting wheelchairs into the bathroom or IV pumps into the bathroom. Clinical space is somewhat inefficient. Hospital services now largely for infection control and inpatient experience are going largely to private rooms, as many of you know, and that is a real problem with our facility. There are significant hurdles for rebuilding on the campus. We've got a 13-acre campus, nine of which are buildable, and those nine acres have been It's a significant financial investment, frankly. Rebuilding while you're using the campus, it's extremely challenging. It's an impact to the community with the construction, the noise and such, and at the end of the day, you're still left with the access issues that you started with. So we feel like a new acute care address for the hospital is the right thing. In addition to that, healthcare is changing, as you all know, if anyone is paying attention to the news, the Affordable Care Act, and the challenges in healthcare. And I wanted to just talk a little bit about that tonight because it impacts the plan, especially for the Tacoma Park campus and the role that plays for Adventist healthcare in providing services, healthcare services to this community. There's a new state reimbursement model that has elements of what's called the Triple Aim, and that's a new phrase that you might have heard. It's a concept designed to improve the value of services rendered, improve overall population health. So this is beyond the acute episodes of care that hospitals traditionally have focused on, meaning you present in the emergency department, you get admitted, five days later you get discharged. That had been primarily what we focus upon. That is getting expanded to where the transition of care, the primary care, keeping people healthy, the transition of care from the hospital to post-acute care, to skilled nursing, rehab facilities, home healthcare is becoming more and more important. We are being charged with reducing readmissions, so it's interesting, the state and the payers are saying, "We want you to drive volume down in your own institution." So you can imagine a system, healthcare, that's been based on charging for fee-for-service, so every time that you had an admission, every time you got an x-ray, every time you did a laboratory test, you were reimbursed. Now the paradigm is shifting to where we're being reimbursed for value versus the volume, if you will, and that's changing how we look at providing healthcare services as a healthcare system. And as I alluded to, we're being incented to enhance the population health, so the health of the community. The payer, the state, are saying, "It's not enough anymore that you just take care of people when they present to you. You need to try and get them to their primary care, trying to keep them healthy and keep them out of your facility, keep them from being readmitted." So we feel like this project addresses really the two main issues that we're confronted with. One is an aging acute care hospital that just is not optimal anymore, and it addresses the challenges we're confronted with, the changes in healthcare. I need to -- just a little bit about the White Oak Campus. As you know, it's about six miles away, and that would be all private rooms on a 48-acre medical campus, which would be, allow us more room for physician offices, medical office building, outpatient services, improve public transportation access. So ride on, Metro Bus would have access. We would also be operating a shuttle from Tacoma Park to the White Oak facility for our staff, our physicians, and for community members who wish to travel to White Oak. Ample on-campus parking, which is an important issue, of course, for visitors, staff, patients, and physicians. And one thing that is very interesting is that it's adjacent to the new FDA campus, and we have started a collaboration with the FDA. We have a memo of understanding where their physicians come and practice medicine, and we believe that it's a collaboration that really could prove fruitful for the hospital, for the FDA, and for the community. So what does that mean for Tacoma Park? Number one, the legacy will continue at Tacoma Park. There are several services that are being offered there currently which fit into the need for population health that will be continued. Number one, primary care is provided on campus through a federally qualified healthcare or health center. In fact, that's being expanded, the size of that clinic is being expanded this year, and that exists and would continue. We currently operate a women's center for Montgomery County residents that provides obstetrical care, prenatal care, gynecological care. That will remain and continue. We propose creating a new urgent care center on the site to serve the urgent care needs of the community, especially hospital services that currently exist will continue. Inpatient behavioral care, as well as inpatient -- someone's got to remind me of this. That would be very helpful. I didn't bring you along for eye candy. Come on, guys. My apology. I'll try and keep up with that. The inpatient rehabilitation as well is the inpatient behavioral health unit. In addition, we have a letter of intent signed by Washington Adventist University to lease 55,000 square feet. We currently have a medical office building on campus where we physician offices are housed. We would expect that not only to continue but to grow, so we would hope that there would be additional physicians available for clinic and consultation, and we will continue laboratory and imaging services that support the services that will be offered on the Tacoma Park campus. So those are services that we know we can provide, we can control. Many of those are already existing, and they would continue and fit right into the need for us to be involved in our community in a population health, transition of care environment. Emergency services clearly are one of the largest concerns of the people of Tacoma Park, and I've heard that in my conversations with the elected officials, I've heard it with citizens. I heard it last time that I presented, a couple months ago, from the folks who came up here. And I wanted to talk specifically about emergency care services, where we're at, what we believe that will look like and what that could look like. I've already mentioned that we are committing to providing urgent care on campus 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and it says here to start. We don't know what the demand for those services will be. We anticipate they will be robust and that that would continue. Urgent care can handle, I was speaking beforehand with someone, but a lot of the things that present to us in the emergency department can be handled at an urgent care facility. You can see the list right there. Cuts, lacerations, flu, broken bones, infections, and the like. As always, in emergency situations, life-threatening situations, 911 is now and will be in the future the best for emergency needs. As you all know, we've spoken about this, the state in 2010 imposed a moratorium on standalone emergency departments, or freestanding medical facilities, as the state refers to them. And we talked about this last time I was here. There has been positive movement in progress since my last presentation. Just last week, the state issued a report, the Maryland Healthcare Commission issued a report on the effect of rate regulation on freestanding emergency departments. They continue to commit to taking those, that report and developing regulations for consideration of future freestanding emergency departments. So this, at least the conversation is continuing, and the commitment to develop regulations is moving forward. Once regulations are developed, once the new rules are in place, our commitment is to evaluate those rules for feasibility of emergency, standalone emergency department services on the Tacoma Park campus. When we looked at all of the services we were going to offer, we wanted to make sure of several things. Viability, can it be sustained now and in the future? Deliverability, can we bring this service to bear in Tacoma Park? Can we ensure that it's provided? And is it compatible with, inconsistent with our community-based healthcare campus? I believe, I stand before you today believing that this project merits your support. It improves the healthcare infrastructure. Our acute care hospital needs to be replaced. That's what it comes down to. This will create additional points, access points for care in our community. It's consistent with healthcare reform in the healthcare goals in Maryland and nationally. It continues a rich legacy in the long-term sustainability of Washington Adventist Hospital in Tacoma Park and in the service area. We feel like it's a unique opportunity to partner with an entity such as the FDA to forward healthcare research and biosciences. And economically, we believe that this will have a positive impact in our area in job, in job creation for the state and for the region. So the next steps, timeline, what does that mean? Well, as you know, the application was officially docketed a week ago Friday by the state, January 9th. Interested parties have a month to react to this with questions and feedback. Again, as you know, the commission will assign a reviewer, and the reviewer then will determine the key elements of the review. We anticipate and are hopeful for a mid-year rendering on and decision, and of course, we are optimistic and hopeful for a positive decision. What does that mean as far as the timetable? Because I think that's important. If approved this year, we would not move to the White Oak Campus until first quarter 2019. So we're looking at about a three-and-a-half to four-year process for construction and occupancy, first quarter 2019. We will continue to reinvest in the Tacoma Park facility. As I mentioned, if the ED moratorium is lifted, if new regulations come out, we will evaluate the feasibility of a standalone emergency department on the Tacoma Park campus, and we will continue to be committed to this city. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your attention, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those now.
Thanks very much for your presentation and for going through not only some of the history, but some of the things that drive the need to do this and how the changing environment, healthcare in the country is changing some of the ways that this is approached. And also thanks for the update on the emergency, freestanding emergency room process in the state, and your commitment to continue to look to evaluate that once you've got the information that you need. I want to make sure that we have a chance for public comments, but I do see that Council Member Smith has a question.
Thank you. Thank you for coming today, and as usual, I appreciate it. A couple questions. One, the shuttle bus that you mentioned, would that be free for Tacoma Park residents if they want to go to the White Oak Campus?
The, I, it would not be free. It would be, I don't know if the rate, Rob, can you help me with that? It's not established?
Not established. Like, there's a small fee.
Define "small" and "nominal." We don't know. We don't know, but we anticipate there will be a small nominal fee for riding that shuttle.
What's the percentage of undocumented patients that come through Washington Adventist Hospital? Because, of course, that drives up your costs, so I'm trying to get some idea of the number of people that, you know, you're going to, that you have to cover.
That's a great question, and I don't have an accurate number off the top of my head. I'm looking to my team. Do we know what that is?
Yes.
Okay. I can get that, and I will get that back to the City Council.
Thank you.
And for something like that, if you can just repeat what they say so that it's on the record?
Okay. The answer was that we don't have that number with us tonight.
But it is significant, what the number is.
Well, let's say I'll get you the information. Yeah, I anticipate that it's a real number, and as I mentioned, we had over $38 million that we paid last year. That's real money that was paid to physicians in clinics to serve the underserved, to serve the uninsured, and also to subsidize clinics for the same.
Oh, wow. Okay.
So that's kind of the ballpark. That is a significant number, clearly, for a hospital.
I asked about undocumented, not uninsured. That's separate, right? Or is it in the same?
Well, it's separate, but similar. The undocumented are not eligible for Medicaid.
Right.
They're not eligible for expanded, that others might be.
Affordable care.
So they are typically undocumented, uninsured, and not eligible for benefits.
Okay.
However, the subsidy, the $38 million, does include subsidies for people who might have, who are documented, who are residents, but still don't have insurance, don't qualify for Medicaid, or are underinsured and need services above and beyond what they can afford.
Okay. You know, we have the Affordable Care Act, and what are you guys seeing? Are you, because I've been told that the number of people that have signed up for it, they're not prepared for the premiums, so I guess that puts them in a catch-22. They can't really afford the actual insurance. Are you guys seeing it? Is it hitting your bottom line? You're finding people that have the insurance card, right? They go in for service of some kind, but when it comes time for the bill to be paid, that's another question.
Yeah, it can be a surprise. I think just from standing back, from a moral standpoint, I think it's a moral good when people have some type of insurance for healthcare, and I think that is a, that's a great thing. The Affordable Care Act gives folks choice of what packages they want to buy, and some of the packages come with significant co-pays attached to them, and oftentimes folks don't realize that they're committing to those co-pays, and that can be a big surprise. So a, it might appear to be a small premium on the front end, but their responsibility on the back end is much larger, the deduct, exactly, the deductibles and the co-pay. So again, Maryland is changing how we are reimbursed on the hospital side. So we, we're getting some certainty in our revenue and getting, also getting responsibility at the same time for a broader delivery of healthcare. It's an issue as people in Medicaid, as well as other private payer plans are choosing these high deductibles because they're more affordable. We all understand that. They're more affordable, but what they're doing, they're shifting the burden for healthcare costs onto themselves, and that becomes a challenge as well.
What is the trade area for emergency rooms? How, where should they be located, the approximate distance between emergency rooms?
I can't answer that with any certainty. You know, it's a function clearly of population, and I could investigate that and see if we can get an answer for you.
Would you consider a community benefits agreement?
I don't know what that means.
Well, you know, residents have said time and time again a number of things, for example, the ER.
Would you
Would you consider an agreement that says, like, like you just said here today, that if you find it feasible, when you do a feasibility study, if the state does change the regulations, that you would actually put an emergency room in Tacoma Park?
I would be willing to have that conversation on, on what that might look like.
Okay. That's fair.
Okay.
And this is just, I'll wrap up with this. You know, I think we're asking a lot from Washington Adventist Hospital. You guys are covering everything, you know, the entire burden of medical services for the city, for this region. And when you guys move, because, you know, this certificate of need, I think, is going to be approved, the number of jobs in the city is going to be reduced, I think drastically. Let's say maybe 300, there might be 300 people remaining working here. I mean, that's, that's just the business of when a large organization moves.
Right.
What I would like to see is if we could work on, like placing an economic development zone over the campus. Not something so much that you would contribute any money, but that we could go to the state with your support and have the state maybe transfer property taxes from the new area over to Tacoma Park for a period of time and help us through this period. Because it's not just going to be, you know, that you guys are leaving. We, as a community, it's, it's going to be a big hole for us. And we're going to have to figure out not just, you know, healthcare resources, but, you know, economic also.
Right.
Because I believe a lot of the employees at the hospital use the local businesses. So how does that impact them? I mean, I don't know. If there are services that residents want that, you know, may not be feasible, maybe we, if we have an economic development zone, maybe we can contribute actual money to it to fix the problem. You know, but just relying on the hospital to do it, and it's limited resources. I mean, you know, there is an unlimited money. Everybody has to know when to, to say, I can't do it anymore.
Right.
I think that way, you guys can get what you want and the city can get a win also.
We, I'd be very interested in that conversation and collaboration. We've been very careful about committing to services. As I mentioned, we know we can provide. With that being said, assuming that mid-year we get approval for the new hospital, we've got an additional three and a half years to work on. What else can we do on that campus that meets the need of that campus and meets the need of the people in Tacoma Park? And we'd be very interested in that. We want that to be a viable, useful, attractive.
Facility.
Facility for the city and for the community for another 108 years, well beyond our tenure.
Yes, I agree. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Schultz.
A couple of questions. You mentioned one of the advantages of the White Oak facility will be job, job creation. Do you have an estimate? I mean, you have 1,353 employees now. First of all, do you assume that when the, when you move, that no, no jobs will be lost simply because of the literal relocation, because it's not that far away? And second is, would there be more jobs at the White Oak campus then, than there are here at the Tacoma Park campus? Do you have a notion, do you have any thoughts on that?
I have a belief that it's going to be a net add. We will be leaving jobs here in Tacoma Park, albeit many are going to go.
Right.
A lot of the job creation is going to be the construction project itself, which is going to be 300 to 330 million dollars, once you include equipment that's going to be purchased. So it's going to be a significant infusion into the local economy in, in that regards. We, I certainly don't anticipate shrinking our labor force, maybe in, in the move out. And as we are able to attract additional clinics, physicians, outpatient services to the campus, we believe it's going to attract more jobs to that area.
Okay. So you think it just, in general, there'll be growth?
Yes.
Both some of the jobs left behind and new, and the advantage of being able to create more jobs because of the, the magnet that the hospital will be in terms of professional services?
Correct.
Do you, I, I don't want to get into a discussion of freestanding emergency rooms. But I just wanted to ask if in your professional career or background studies and stuff like that, do you have any experience or not, or knowledge about the, about freestanding emergency rooms and their vi, their general viability?
I have a, a, a small amount of experience. You, in, in the states that I have worked as a hospital administrator, Colorado, Illinois, Tennessee, and now Maryland, and I should say in those specific markets in those states, standalone emergency departments weren't very, very many. They're just, you didn't see it very often. So the challenges with admissions, a lot of admissions come through emergency departments that you end up transferring to, to a facility. We saw proliferation of, really, the urgent care has been growing, much more than the standalone emergency departments. But that, this is totally anecdotal. I am in no way an expert on that.
Okay. That's just, that answers my question. The last question I just have is, how important is the city's, and to your con process, is the city's endorsement of your application?
That's a great question that I probably can answer. You know, I'm going to state the obvious here, so forgive me. Your endorsement is better than not endorsing the project, clearly. I think we have, we built a, what we believe is a very solid and appropriate application that we believe will stand on its own merits. We anticipate that there will be some opposition, as you would expect from, whether it's from different hospitals or, or different interested parties. But I can't, I cannot answer that question. I think the Maryland Healthcare Commission can answer that question. But I will say again, the obvious is that I would welcome your support, and I think could only enhance the prospects of, of, of the application being accepted.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. We'll now proceed to the public hearing. So I have a sign-up sheet with two people who have signed up to speak. We'll take them first, and then anybody else who wishes to speak can do so. Ask you to come to the podium and identify yourself. Keep your comments to three minutes. And the two people who signed up are Catherine Tunis and Pat Lovles.
Hi, I'm Catherine Tunis. I'm here tonight as the president of the San Sylago Citizens Association. I wanted to say that the Washington Adventist Hospital is a great asset to the community. It was a real decision point when I purchased my house here 23 and a half years ago to have a full, high-quality hospital a mile from my house. And I think we're sorry to see the hospital go, although we realize that technology moves on and businesses change. So we want to try to make the best of the situation. The citizens in the, in Saska met a little bit more than a year ago now, I think, and discussed the hospital leaving and felt that we wanted to maintain an emergency room, a freestanding emergency room in Tacoma Park when they left. We believe that they should have been allowed to put the ER in their certificate of need application. I, I personally believe that a bureaucrat erred in telling them not to. But I also want to say that I appreciate the attention of both the city and the hospital to this issue as we discuss this transition over time. We weren't hearing that so much a couple of years ago, and we're really glad to hear people pay attention to it now. As a matter of fact, Eric and Rob invited me in to speak with them about this issue, I think it was November. And I thought it was very nice, and we had a nice chat about the pros and cons and ways of moving forward together and the kinds of things that, not in great, any great detail, but that there are certain things that need to happen in the regulation process and elsewhere to make an emergency room viable. And I just wanted to say I also appreciate Eric's attention to the emergency room issue in his presentation. And I urge the council and the city to continue their attention on this issue and the regulations in order to help create the conditions that would make it positive to keep the emergency room in Tacoma Park. And I think if we work together, we may be able to reach that goal. So thank you.
Thank you. Pat Lovles?
Okay. My name is Pat Lovles, your official Pice delegate. And one thing I'd like to know is, as a member of the community, I'm dependent on that hospital. There was a time when I wouldn't, it would make no difference whether I was near a hospital or not, because I almost never went to one. Previous to 1987, it would make no difference how many times I went to the hospital or not, because it would be just something in the way, passing on the bus. But now, since I get hurt by the Klan and I got longstanding health issues and progressive illness, I just want you to know, I'm needing that hospital. I really need that hospital, because I don't want to see it go to White Oak. Because I, I don't know what would happen if I had a major heart attack or if what happened last night turned out to be a tragedy. My sugar went up last night after having a pizza down in Anacostia, after the Martin Luther King celebration. I came back home and my, my sugar was climbing, it was spiking rapidly up to, I think it was up to 280 or 290. And they called an ambulance. The ambulance came right away, but thank God I didn't have to go in. They tested it themselves and they said it wasn't, it could, it would gone down on its own, which it did. And I don't know what would happen if I went into diabetic ketoacidosis and I had to be rushed up all the way to White Oak. Whether I would go into a crisis and pass away or not, I don't know, because that's really a deadly disease among diabetics, the deadly complication. And I've had a five, I had a five-way quadruple, what do you call it, bypass in my chest. And if something went wrong with that, would I get to a hospital fast enough? Down here, I'm pretty assured that I would. Because we have a hospital and emergency room and, and operating rooms right there where you need them. So I don't know whether not getting to the hospital in time would cost me life or limb, whether I'd get gangrene again because of the long wait. Sometimes it doesn't take long for skin tissue to die, 18 minutes sometimes it's all it takes, like with a tourniquet or with a clot or anything else. I don't want to find that out. But I need that hospital. And also my friends and neighbors in the Franklin Apartments, they are dependent on that hospital. They are dependent on, and other elderly and senior citizens and handicapped are dependent on that hospital. So I want you to take that into effect. I am a little scared about what's going to happen to me and my friends after that hospital closes. It's going to be a tragedy for some people, and I want you to know that. And by the way, what difference does it make whether someone's undocumented or not? They're a human being and needed treatment, and that's, that should come first, and they shouldn't have to be living fear where they're going to get caught undocumented at the hospital. That should not be a factor at all. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to testify?
Hi, my name is Saul Schneiderman. I live at 306 Lincoln Avenue. And I've lived in Tacoma Park for, for over three decades, and I grew up with the sand, as we used to call it. And I just wanted to say how much I appreciate the council giving this its due diligence and taking, being forced to take in a way, the responsibility of looking out for the healthcare, not only of the citizens of the city, but also our surrounding community. Someone once said, if you want to know what the social fabric of a nation is like, visit its prison, a prison. I would say if you really want to know, go visit the emergency room at the Washington Adventist Hospital on a Saturday night. And also Dr. King, whose birthday we, we celebrated yesterday, said, the greatest inequality of all is the inequality in, in healthcare. And I'm sure that probably, I'm not sure, but it's, many of you volunteered to serve our, our city as mayor and council and staff, and probably didn't think that this issue of healthcare would be something that would be, an issue that would be of concern to you, that's so important. But it is, because in our country, we have healthcare still as a number, number one issue, because it's not universalized as it is around the world. This is one of the deficiencies of the American system. And so it puts a responsibility, not only on elected officials, but also on hospital officials, who have to bear the burden of the simple fact that we have a healthcare crisis in America. So I wanted to come down and say how much I appreciate your concern and having the opportunity to say this to you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Brian Robinson, Maple Avenue. I live on the same street as the hospital. I don't appreciate it. In fact, I'm appalled at the lack of participation in this process, the lack of the people, the lack of number of people that are here for this, the lack of, of concern for the closure of a hospital in our area and replacement with a hospital five miles away. And, and the only concern you have is whether or not undocumented immigrants, whether or not there will be more undocumented immigrants, and why not, which there are, by the way. So their costs are not going to go down just because it's more suburban. There's a dozen, have a dozen urban hospitals in DC and they're closing, they've been closing them, thanks to our wonderful healthcare system and our wonderful support for individual mandate, mandated health coverage. And we're just going to let all those people on Lower Maple Avenue die for lack of emerg, access to emergency care services. That's ambulance care. That's ambulance response time. And, and that is not covered by an urgent care center for cuts and lacerations, apologies to, to the hospital. My concerns are not addressed to Washington Adventist Hospital. I know they need a new building. They need a new hospital before they can do anything to the old hospital. The only way they could do anything to improve the current hospital would be to build a new hospital first. So I don't have a problem with them building a new hospital, and why not? But we need our own hospital in, in Tacoma Park. And if building a new hospital is what accomplishes that, then I'm all for it. But this current, this current resolution you guys are drafting says nothing about urging Washington Adventist to have a two-hospital program or urging them to have something short of a full hospital. It just says, let's have economic development on the site. Let's turn it into a hospital campus and maybe have an, but, but we're not even going to ask them. In the resolution, which is apparently is the only legal, the only legally binding, the only legally binding comment you guys can make is now, in the content of this resolution. Once that's done, there'll be, there's going to be no second chances for you guys to come back and say, oh, by the way, we thought it was understood privately that you guys were going to build this and that and the other thing. No, it'll be all about economic development, even though we're losing jobs because of that, this, which is fine. If you want to build a downsized healthcare facility or whatever, we're still going to lose jobs, so no amount of economic development is going to fix that. Tearing down the hospital and turning it into mansions like Kathy Porter wanted to do won't fix that. And, and I have nothing against the hospital. The hospital saved my father's life. I have nothing against the president. He made an excellent presentation. I think that if Washington Adventist Hospital were allowed by state lobbyists to build an emergency room, they would. But guess what? Your lobbyists said to you, and you agreed with them, that getting a brewery in this town was more important than saving our hospital, and it wasn't a legislative priority that, that changing the liquor laws was. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Love it, love it, love it. Love it.
Evening. Joe Brown, community activist. Had many occasions to use the emergency room over there as a homeless activist, bringing people that needed to care over there. I've used it myself. Recently, a friend of mine had a very Recently, a friend of mine had a very bad neurological problem. They diagnosed it, sent him to Bayview Medical Center in Baltimore. He needed that place very much. They want to maintain the emergency room. I'm not sure, I'm kind of confused what the difference is between an emergency room and an urgent care place. I don't think an urgent care center provides quite what you need for a emergency room. I think emergency room is more thorough with the triage and all. So, I would plead with you to work with the Washington Adventist Hospital, who definitely needs a new hospital, as Brian said, but to keep as much of the facility open as possible right here at Tacoma Park.
Thank you.
Love it.
I'm David Paris, Larch Avenue. I urge you to continue to pursue legislation. From my standpoint, there's a disconnect between a number of the important points you want to raise about the process that are raised in the resolution, questions about access to emergency care, and the absence of an ER in the proposal, which is going to be considered in the certificate of need process and hearing. To have those issues relegated to a separate hearing, which may or may not eventually get held, will sort of eviscerate the value of all of the work that you want to engage in during the certificate of need hearing. I don't, the Maryland Healthcare Commission doesn't have authority, or at least the previous recommended decision made a point of saying that we don't have authority over urgent care facilities and some of the other things that the city of Tacoma Park recommended. It noted in a different place in a footnote that it does have authority, or will have authority, over freestanding ERs, which are in the process of being regulated. But for the moratorium, it indicated it was not able to make a judgment about, because of the moratorium and because it wasn't in the application. I think it's important to have things dealt with comprehensively, and hence, the need for legislation to make that possible. The fact that you have apparently an improving working relationship with the hospital, you're talking about a joint study and that kind of thing, I think that shows the potential for partnership, which is one of the perceived requirements for legislation, and that you should get back to our legislators and talk to them about how to move forward with legislation. And if you do go the separate process, you at least need to jointly communicate your future intentions to the commission and perhaps, well, and reduce the number of ER cubicles that are being requested for White Oak. There needs to be some continuity somewhere, and it really should be provided through legislation. Talk to the District 20 delegation, please.
Thank you.
Love it.
Anybody else? Seeing none, I call this public hearing to a close. Thank you all very much. We do not have any additional agenda items this evening. I do want to run through some coming agendas, just to make sure that people are up on a number of things that are coming up in the next month. A reminder that tomorrow evening, in this room, at 7:00, the Council will be here to hear public comments about the Tacoma Junction redevelopment. Next Monday, before our city council meeting, we have a farewell reception for City Manager Brian Kenner from 7:00 to 7:30 in the atrium lobby. Monday night's meeting will start with a presentation at 7:30 of the Police Department Annual Report. We will have a resolution regarding relocation of Washington Adventist Hospital, and there are two additional single reading ordinances that were just put on the agenda and brought to my attention, so I want to make sure that people know that they're on there. First one is authorizing purchase of timekeeping software, and the other one is authorizing or authorizing expansion of the contract with CVS for the city TV HD upgrade, and that's obviously not CVS Pharmacy. Then, Wednesday next week, a week from tonight, from tomorrow night, the city council will be having our second retreat, and this will be the one to discuss goal setting for the FY16 budget, and that'll be at a time and location to be announced. Monday, February 2nd, during the council work session, we'll have the Arborus Annual Report. We've tentatively scheduled discussion of the ordinance regarding parking of commercial vehicles in residential areas. Tuesday, the 3rd, we have the second of the Tacoma Junction Redevelopment Public Comment periods, and that will be at 7:00 in this room. The following Monday, February 9th, we have tentatively scheduled a work session discussion on the Dog Park update. Tuesday, the 10th, it would be the, tentatively, the third Tacoma Junction Redevelopment Public Comment, and we'll see kind of where things go with the first two, and the format for that third one may be very different, so we'll keep you informed on that. Then, Wednesday, the 11th, the next night, we have the first of the two department round tables with a number of city departments getting ready for the budget. And finally, Monday, February 16th, is President's Day, and city offices will be closed, so the council meeting for that week will be on Tuesday, February 17th. And we've tentatively scheduled work session discussion of Tacoma Junction redevelopment and continued discussion of vacant and blighted properties. So, that kind of takes care of some highlights for the next month. At this point, we'll go to public comments on anything that was not the public hearing this evening. Are there any public comments on anything else?
Hi, I'm Catherine Tunis, Larch Avenue, and I am here to talk about the woods in McLaughlin School, which is up for auction in two days. And it's been a topic of the meetings, council meetings the last two weeks, and I definitely appreciate the council's attention to that issue. And also, I want to let anyone know that they don't know already, that there is a option, Plan B option group of citizens who are really dedicated to preserving these woods, and is considering bidding on the property. The city is not able to bid enough, but we've done some research on our own, and we definitely believe that the city is the best, would be best to acquire this property, and certainly hope that you will. We will not be bidding against the city. One of the things that we have been done doing is collecting donations to be held if the city needs them above their maximum bid. In other words, if there's another bidder out there that's bidding against the city, you hit your maximum, we've got a series of checks to increase that bid. People on the Option B group have been donating, as well as the last couple of days, we have asked citizens to come in, we are, they are coming in. People are making donations in the tens of dollars, the hundreds of dollars, the thousands of dollars. We have several $10,000 donations from individuals. So far, we've got $50,000 that we have told council about, and we are still collecting donations. We have some additional pledges. We don't have those in hands yet, and we are definitely hoping to increase that, again, to bolster the city's position to secure this property. Some people have told me that they're really proud to have made the, some people are making these donations anonymously, and they don't want their name used, but I will tell you that Lorraine Pierceall and Paul Kristalstein made a point of telling me, "We are proud of doing this. We want our name used. We want it out there." We are still collecting. If anyone wants to make a donation, these are tax deductible donations if you itemize. I can collect your check, or Cindy DiBalla, or such even Ilka Kalsha, if I can pronounce his name properly. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lovelace?
Yeah. Hello, this is Pat Lovelace, your official peace delegate. One thing I want to do is point out to people, for a while here, I noticed we're getting increased public participation, but today, when we're discussing a very important topic, such as the closing of the hospitals, I wanted to let people know that this is the time when public participation is needed at the most, when there's an issue like this coming on. We don't have that many people. We need to get more attendance in these meetings. We need to do it. Public partition is a key to success if you want to get what you want in the city or this country. You know, we the people, remember, it's we the people that operates. And I want to tell us, the city council, to do, if they can set aside sometime each week, such as the council meetings, to do what is right, pledge what they wanted to do with Dr. Martin Luther King's day. And I want to let you know that it was a great parade down in Anacostia, and a great peace walk, and I was down there carrying the peace sign. And I want to get other people involved in learning about Dr. King and what he stood for, for me. He was a great hero, and he, I had a lot of the ideals he had when he was shot, and I was pretty upset. And now, I can do what I can to remember what he was all about by teaching other people what he was all about. So, I'd like it, if it's possible, you people on the city council can think about what Martin Luther King would have done about healthcare before you close that hospital. And I would like to ask the people out there in TV land to think about coming to our meetings, because when there's a real issue like this coming on, it's going to affect every man, woman, and child, and infant in this city. We don't have too many people out speaking out. This room should be packed. It's a real meat theater. When you go, talking about closing the hospital, and there's not many people out there to give their opinions on it. I've talked to different people on the phone, different people on the street, and they said, and some of them didn't even know that the hospital was going to move, and the Tacoma Park campus was going to close. And I want you people, again, when you look at the, see that wrecking ball go through the walls of Washington Adventist Hospital Tacoma Park, I want to ask you people, what did you do to save it? What did you do to save the healthcare of the hundreds or thousands down here on Ward 4 and the other wards of the city? I'm afraid of it myself, and I'm going to, I want to get other people to stand up and work for peace, and that's also work to keep your hospital open, and doing what you can to remember what Dr. Martin Luther King stood for. And thank you, Brian, for speaking up on the public participation. I appreciate that very much. So, I want to see more people at these meetings. Come on, love it, love it, love it.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, seeing none, we will go to council comments. I'll start off, because I don't see any lights. I just wanted to note that I did represent the city on Sunday at the funeral for Craig Anthony Chandler, who was a Baltimore city policeman who died in the line of duty. He had originally worked at the Washington Adventist Hospital in their security operation, and he had some close working relationships with a number of Tacoma Park officers, and his family is from this area, and his family has many connections with Tacoma Park. I hadn't realized until I was at the funeral that his uncle is Bertram Jennerlett, better known as Mr. G., who was the principal at Pony Branch Elementary School next door for any number of years, and who I and a number of people in the city have worked with on a number of wonderful projects, and so, that made for a closer connection. There were about 1,000 people at the funeral, probably about 600 police officers and about 400 other people, and it was really a very moving and touching ceremony, and I was glad to be able to attend, and just wanted to make sure that people know that he had many connections with this community. I want to remind folks that there was a press conference last week announcing that the city was a semifinalist in the Georgetown University Energy Prize, and remind folks that what happens going forward is that there's now a two-year process where we have to come up with various ways to save energy in the city for both public buildings and for the residential sector. And the next stage in this process is that Georgetown University will evaluate how we saved, not only the amount of energy that we saved over the next two years, but whether the types of projects that we came up with are innovative and replicable and scalable so that they can be used in other communities. And my understanding of the process is that then, after the, after two years from now, then they will designate finalist communities, and then there will be the requirement to basically send in a report and document everything that we've been doing and kind of make the best case for us being the winner, and that's about a six-month process. So, my best guess is that the end of the Georgetown University Energy Prize process will be somewhere mid-year of 2017 with the eventual announcement of a winner, and that winning jurisdiction would get $5 million. I and Councilmember Smith went to Annapolis last Wednesday on opening day of the legislative session, and met with and talked with any number of legislators, both returning and new, and also talked with a number of municipal colleagues about the upcoming session and what's going to be happening. I returned from that the same day and went to the Old Town Business Association year-end party, which was an opportunity to meet with any number of Old Town Business Association owners, including some of the owners of the new businesses coming to town, and got a chance to meet with some of them. And a lot of exciting things are going to be happening in Old Town over the next few months. Councilmembers Smith, Schultz, and myself, on Thursday, went to the Maryland Municipal League Montgomery County Chapter Meeting, and Deputy City Manager Suzanne Ludlow was there as well, and she was presenting progress or lack thereof on tax duplication issues, or as I like to refer to it, county revenue theft. And that continues to be an issue that we're grappling with, and there are going to be continuing meetings of the working group, and we'll see where things go, but it sounded like there was the possibility that even though they had indicated that there would be kind of a level funding from last year's reimbursement levels, that that may not be the case.
It's not in writing yet.
But we'll have to see. I also went on Friday to my Council of Governments Chesapeake Bay and Water Resources Policy Committee meeting, and so, there's just always lots of things going on now that we're back into the new year and everybody's meeting again. So, the schedule gets filled very quickly. And tomorrow night, no, sorry, Thursday night, there's going to be the next meeting of the 125th Anniversary Committee to figure out the ways that we can celebrate our 125th anniversary in April, May, and June of this year coming up. And so, if anybody's interested in joining that group, the meeting is 7:30 on Thursday in the third-floor council conference room. And the MML Legislative Committee is going to be meeting feverishly again now, every Wednesday for the next four or five weeks and well into the session. And finally, I just wanted to mention, to say in general that I heard a number of comments this evening with which I disagreed, and I would just like to point out that just because somebody says something in public doesn't necessarily mean it's true. And I'll go to Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to thank the organizers of the MLK Dinner for inviting me to be the emcee. I had a wonderful time yesterday. I could not believe that over 400 people showed up. It was an amazing event. Thank you.
Councilmember Schultz.
I guess in comparison to the high level of discussion or issues we had tonight, I have something very, rather prosaic that has to do with the weather and the snow forecasting. I believe the city has a private, has a contract with a private forecaster, because I noticed that, and I may be wrong on that, but I noticed that Kathy Plevy put out a, an announcement to expect two to three inches of snow. On the way, on the drive from my home over here this evening, the local forecast was saying, "Won't happen until late in the morning, and it'll be probably less than, less than one inch." And of course, there's nothing we can do about all these forecasters who have their own opinions. But I'm just curious if you, Brian or Susie, if you have comments on how you, how you kind of split the... kind of split the, all the opinions and try to make decisions on preparation, which, to me, it's almost like playing a game of roulette.
Yeah, I mean, you know, we, excuse me, Tacoma Park unfortunately is no different than every other jurisdiction around here, trying to get as prepared as we need to. You know, it's inevitable, when we spin up for 15 inches of snow, we get two, and when we expect three, we get 12. That's sometimes just the way that it goes. I know the announcement that then went out earlier today, I know that, I think that that was in reference to Montgomery County making a winter weather advisory, and so I think she was just trying to communicate that out to as many people as possible. Even I was looking at the weather here a second ago, and the forecaster now, now they're saying it might be in the afternoon, so it might actually impact the evening commute. I'm sure by midnight, we will have another forecast that will tell us. I know that our, the city's process is, is that we normally huddle early in the morning, like every other jurisdiction. We have a representative that sits on the COG, Emergency Weather, sort of call-in that happens most time at 4:00 AM. That's Ron Hardy, so that we can get a sense about what the rest of the jurisdictions are doing, get a sense about what the federal government's planning, because again, Tacoma Park tends to take its lead from the federal government in terms of closures and delays.
Do we have a relationship with a private forecasting company?
We don't.
We don't?
No.
Okay. Oh, we did, but I was wrong. Okay. Well, good luck.
Good care.
Yeah, I mean, I think that it does, it is part of why we like to have people sign up for the Tacoma Alert, because we do try to do a 6:00 AM kind of conference call or whatever among the folks with the city to determine if there's something special we need to put out that's specific to Tacoma Park. And as the city manager said, we mostly rely on the federal government. As you know, with our last little snow event, I think we were the only jurisdiction to close because it was particularly bad right here. But that was because, you know, we do have to use our own judgment, and sometimes it's looking out the window to see what it is.
Thank you.
Councilmember Grimes.
Thank you. I have a number of things. One is that I've been working with my constituent, Lindsay Parsons, who is the Executive Director of Real Food for Kids Montgomery, who approached me and the city manager back a number of months ago about the city's vending machine options. They were part of a successful effort to get the county's public schools to change what's offered in the county vending machines to more helpful choices. The city manager expressed a willingness to evaluate that, and I suggested to Real Food for Kids Montgomery that they come up with some concrete suggestions about options and so on. They're getting ready to do that. I assume that council colleagues will be supportive of that switch. My guess is that it won't have any real revenue implications unless there are contracts involved. I did suggest to Real Food for Kids Montgomery that they include the recreation director and the deputy city manager when they do send in their suggestions. Next, I've been communicating with members of the Streetscape Task Force that the council set up to make recommendations regarding the Streetscape. Now, they, I've read their draft report and made a number of suggestions, as did a number of other people, some of whom are in this room, and they expect to come to the council with that soon. There's no session set up for that presentation and then presumably a discussion yet, so they'll discuss that with Bruce. And however, I did note that the Streetscape Task Force, when we set them up, we asked them to report in by last November, and it's past last November, so it's unclear to me whether we need to reauthorize them somehow. I assume it can be done, since we set them up by a resolution, by a simple resolution. And then in addition, John Lawrence told me that Sarah Danes said that it would be good to have members of that task force, maybe some new people, maybe subtract a few as an advisory group, as the city implements the recommendations. So I bring that up to ask whether we need a resolution extending that task force formally.
Have to find out.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be answered right now, because we're not going to do a resolution right now. I have to ask a question that I've asked quite a number of times before. How are we doing on the hiring of a halftime nuisance abatement officer for parking enforcement?
I know, again, we are down to two candidates. We're doing background checks right now on both of them. We don't expect that those background checks will take nearly as long as the
They're not from Virginia?
Back, background checks of some of our police officers, so, and I think once we get those background checks, which I assume will be in the next few weeks here, then we'll be able to make a selection.
Okay, well, I'll plan to ask the police chief for the same question in a week when he appears here for the police report. And then, one last question. I can't recall whether you determined the structure of tomorrow evening's Tacoma Junction session. Before you answer that, we've had a lot of public comment, either formally invited or when people just show up to make comment during public comment period. What we haven't had a lot of is discussion, and I do note that in the community, we have at least three groups that have formed. One is, let's call it loosely, the co-op backers. Another is the sort of, throw the whole thing out, I'm being reductionist here. Another sort of start over, I should say, with a community-involved process. And a third is stay the course with the current RFP process. So there've been a lot of statements and comments made, but not a whole lot of discussion. If there's a way to get some facilitated discussion among the participants who do come here tomorrow night, I think that would be great. But what is it you're planning?
The format that I, that we'd like to do for tomorrow night is to, again, have an opportunity for community members to come up with a specific amount of time and provide, again, the council their comment. You know, I think that what I've seen in the, I think, eight or so public sessions that we've had thus far, is that we certainly have groups of folks that have come to more than one of those sessions, but we always get sort of new people. And I don't want to make, I want to make sure that we provide opportunities for any new folks that want to say anything, to be able to express themselves and give comments to the council. You know, I, even internally, we have discussed ways to try to facilitate additional discussion or conversation. You know, I think that we still are looking for some potential ways such that we can get at what I think is important from the council's perspective. One of the things that I heard, lastly, from the council, two things I've heard from the council. One is to try to make sure that we have progress, that we're sort of farther along when we need to be, which I think is in sort of mid-February or so. And then the second, which I'm hopeful that the format for tomorrow night's session will take, is having the council have this framework, or what are the core issues that you all are interested in terms of making a decision. And I think that there are a variety of ways that we can get to that. I'm hopeful that one of the ways that we get to that tomorrow night is by really asking for people to structure their comments in terms of really providing you all, who are going to be the decision-makers, who are the mouthpiece, for lack of a better word, of the, of the community and the residents as it relates to this issue, to give you all the comments, the data that you all need in order to make those decisions around what kind of criteria is most important to you.
I'll make, Greg.
I was just going to add something to what he said. As I've been trying to think about what I thought would work best, and having some short conversations with staff about that, I've been trying to think about, starting with the format that we're going to have tomorrow night, but finding the right way, both thinking about it in advance and building on whatever we do here tomorrow night, that there can be a different format for the, for the second evening, and then building on that potentially a very different format for the third meeting. So trying to kind of anticipate the need for some things, but also wanting to see what comes of the first one.
I think that's great, except for one thing. I am not looking forward to a third meeting.
Well, I'm not either.
Of course, while tentative necessary. So yeah, what I'm getting at here is that it would be, I think, very helpful for the council, the staff, and the community to try to work some consensus building into this, because there are people, and the longer we go without that consensus, people, there are people with entrenched positions that are getting even more entrenched because they see other people taking positions that are in opposition as they perceive it to their own, so they have to build the wall even higher. So if we could do something to start breaking down walls by having discussion rather than just statement of positions, that would be great. And Mayor, it sounds like you're thinking, well, putting words in your mouth, you're thinking something along those lines as well, or at least something different. I will say also that I'm sure that every single person on this podium has opinions about the different proposals, and we've generally held them back because we have remained in listening mode. And I would hope that we'll get to a point where council members will start freely expressing their own opinions and having discussion among council members about their various proposals. And one final thing, which is just to emphasize the depth of disagreement, that I've had community members say to me, "We're trying to choose design and design elements here and not developers. We need to put the design first." And it seems to me that at least one of the finalist developers, what they're really selling is themselves. They're not, they're saying, and I think that several of them are actually saying, "Well, we can do lots of different things with the design. We just need a green light from you that you actually are willing to work with us, you know, cut down the list to two maybe instead of four," something like that, which is, which is in an opposite direction from what this community member is saying. Some community members expect the design first, and it seems like the process that we have to this point with four contending developers and a fifth party out there is based on selection of developers rather than, than concepts. I hope I expressed that well enough, but it seems like we need a more consensus on the process here and what it is we're selecting. Thanks.
Councilmember Mail.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Grimes, your comments just reminded me that I wanted to address one thing that I saw in a public email that I think went to the whole council today and maybe some listservs, which was that, which stated some, to some version of, that the council in March is essentially preparing to pick a developer, and that that decision is somehow irreversible. And to me, the implication of what was written was that it was like the land was going to be sold to the developer in February or March. And I just wanted to say that that is not what is going to happen if we make any choices associated with developers. It is just the next stage of the dance, and we're not talking about a resolution or any other action that changes the title, the owner, owner, who has the title. So I just, I see your head nodding, and
Yeah, I just, if, again, to state, really, all options remain open for the council. An option is to not select anybody. That is an option. An option is to narrow down the field from however many are there to a smaller number, so you can have more specific discussions with a smaller group of people. Another option is to select someone. If you select someone, it is important to continue to convey that doesn't give or give away any additional rights that the city has. The city during, all the city is saying is that we think that you all have the concept that is closest to what we might want to do, and that kicks off a discussion and negotiation period with that said developer. There is no transfer of land, title, and/or money that happens. As a matter of fact, the only thing that would really happen is that that would probably give cause for the selected person to expend some additional money, to probably do some studies, and to make sure that they were, from a design perspective, have some charrettes with the community and so forth. But it is important to, to say this, which is that, as Councilmember Mail said, the city never gives up its negotiating position during that discussion. At the end of that discussion period, the city may say, "We couldn't get to a decision." And so, "Thank you very much, no harm, no foul," and the city retains title to everything. The city has all of its options still available to it if it doesn't get to any agreement or it doesn't like the product. But the end goal from, or the ending process from the city's perspective would be a legal document which would very clearly outline what it is you are giving up effectively, what you are selling to said developer and/or ground leasing, and then what you're getting in return. And so that process is months away, and a lengthy process which involves the community, it's going to involve parking planning to some, or the county to some extent, so there's lots of other parties that will consult on that. But the city in no way, no matter what decision you all choose to make in February, March of this year, you retain 100% control of the process and your piece of land that you own.
Thank you.
Good, I hear him say that.
Anybody else? City managers' comments?
Nothing, thank you.
Legislative update.
Just very briefly, the legislative session has started. I'm starting to get the deluge of bills and schedules for budget hearings and those kinds of things. We'll be sharing those over the next week or so. Some of the things that kind of made my eyes get a little bit bigger are the request for a fiscal note on getting rid of stormwater authority. And so we'll be calculating that out and submitting that kind of information, what the implications are for the city, for example. The information on the alcoholic beverage resolution is in the process of being drafted into the various bills and moving quickly. So once I get a schedule of that, I'll be sharing that as well. That's it.
Okay, thank you. And we do not have any adopt, any minutes to adopt this evening, so the next thing is that we will go into, we'll vote to go into closed session to consult with legal counsel regarding Washington Adventist Hospitals petition to relocate before the Maryland Healthcare Commission and to discuss pending or potential litigation, including administrative proceedings before the commission pursuant to annotated Code of Maryland General Provisions Article 3-305b, 7, and 8. Following the closed session, we will adjourn for the evening with somebody who would like to move to closed session.
And to resume discussion.
Yes, which I had already said at the beginning.
Oh. Sorry, I'll move it.
Okay.
I'll second. If that's necessary.
Moved by Councilmember Grimes, second by Councilmember Schultz. All those in favor, please raise a hand. That is six to nothing. And so we are going into closed session, and we'll adjourn after the conclusion of the closed session.